The passage of time. We have shared your joy at the birth of your children and proudly we have watched them grow. We've taken care of your health care needs during the good times and the not so good. Your parents and grandparents have depended upon us. Together, we have shared the struggles and the wonders of life. At Oktobahaw County Hospital, we are celebrating 30 years of being your lifelong choice in health care.
Welcome to our before Christmas meeting. That the first thing is the approval of the official agenda, but I think we may have some things to be taken off. And if all of you would take note here, I'll go through those items. We would like to say, take item A under Board Business off for right now. The consideration amendment to the ordinance to determine the size scope of the projects that require planning zoning commission review. I think there's some questions that Davis may have. Item B, consideration of amendment to the false alarm ordinance. Would like for a suggestion in regard to say, any items on here for consent purposes? And do I hear anyone who would like to make that suggestion?
Mr. Mayor and Board, for your consideration for items for the consent agenda, I would offer the following. Roman numeral seven, D, as in dog. And roman numeral I, excuse me, I under that same category, roman numeral seven, seven I. On each there, we really need a report from the Infrastructure Committee in conjunction with that cap loan thing. Now back to consent agenda. Under eight departmental business, all three items under the Electric Department, C, one, two, and three. D under Personnel, number one. Going to Public Services, E, one and two. And would offer those for possible consent agenda items.
With those particular changes, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Do we have a motion?
Second.
And a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Do you have a motion, or has everyone had the opportunity to look at the minutes of August the 15th? We're about to catch up on these minutes. We're down to what, one more meeting, is that right?
Yes, sir.
That was the old Jake break one.
Mayor and Board, I move approval of the August 15th, 2016 minutes.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion with a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. As I said, this is our meeting prior to Christmas. We hope that all of you have a happy holidays. We hope that you're safe and that if you travel, you'll be very careful so you can be back at some of our future meetings. At this time, we'll open up for citizen comments.
My name is Alvin Tonlin, Ward, 7. Happy holidays to you. I hope you have a Merry Christmas and a safe New Year. There's a few concerns of citizens. The citizens on Apple Street and Curry Street, they are complaining about the garbage not being picked up, they cannot get in to get it. And with holidays, red at us, that is going to be kind of rough. With Christmas Eve, Sunday, and New Year's, the following Sunday, and the blue laws that we have, the citizens just concerned about that with the holidays falling on Sunday, then will we have any problem with that? And that, just some concerns of citizens.
Mr. Turner. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
If not, it has public appearances, I believe there are no public appearances that have been announced to us tonight. The mayor has no business tonight. Board Business, we took off A and B, and it brings us down to item C, and this deals with the appointments of vacancies to the Library Board, Museum Board, the Starville Housing Authority, and the Golden Triangle Regional Sided Waste Management Authority. I believe we have had applications from Dr. McAlpin, who has asked to be reappointed to the Library Board. The Museum Board, we have two people that have stepped forward, one in Matt Ward's Ward, and one in your Ward, I believe. Is that correct?
Correct.
We have four vacancies. We have the Starville Housing, what are the two peoples?
Of the museum?
Yes.
Brad M.A.U.C.K., who is now the mayor, and Ruth Morgan.
Morgan, okay. Those are the two names that are asking to be appointed to the Museum Board. The Starville Housing Authority is Jack Day, is asking for reappointment. And the Golden Triangle Sided Waste Board would be a reappointment of Mr. McLaren and myself to it. It's been vacant, I think, since the last mayor. It's been a customary thing for those particular appointments. Do we have a motion that we appoint these people? Or any discussion?
Do you want to do it in just one motion for all the boards, or separate motions?
I think we ought to do it all in one vote, in one motion.
Move that we appoint the applicants to the various positions for which they applied for, the length of terms specified in their advertisement.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor of the appointments to the vacant boards, would they please say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, passes. Brings us down for a contract from John Young. And Lynn, could you step up with us on this? That we're using, we have used Mr. Young in the past, that he's been very helpful on the Odd Fellows Cemetery on Martin Luther King. We have, we need to put a hourly conception in here, what you have in mind for hourly.
It was just a continuation of the same thing that we had with him now. He has been assisting Mr. Greer, but I believe Mr. Greer's got his feet underneath him now and is not in need of John's expertise, although occasionally, I believe they have questions that John's been kind enough to share with him. But he was working on the Odd Fellows Cemetery, putting the plat together and making that map of the cemetery for us as part of what he had attempted to help with. And then was doing a little research, sorry, doing a little research on self-insurance for property insurance, because he had had some history with the city doing that, so.
Do you have an hourly base for him?
My bad, Mayor. I think it was, well, that's what I was just going to say, thirty.
And do we have a time, hourly, weekly thing that we know?
He's been under twenty. He's been, he's been under twenty hours a week. And I don't know that we necessarily will need him for that, for a full twenty hours a week. He's been coming in fairly regularly and working on this. Hopefully, we'll be able to wrap it up fairly soon. I don't have a timeframe though.
Ms. Brooke, wouldn't the current board action be sufficient to allow him to continue? From my understanding?
It probably would, Vice Mayor, but because he had, was no longer helping Mr. Greer, which was what we ostensibly had him do in the first place, I wanted to make sure the board was still comfortable with that.
Do we have a motion that we approve this, for this other segment of responsibility?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the continuation of our contract with Mr. John Young, as a contractual person, and that he be contractually engaged for these specified projects and for any other project that may be deemed necessary by the Mayor and Board.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
Thank you, Mayor.
Is, do we have Bill, is he here tonight to make this presentation of the erosion control plan?
No, sir, he is not.
And is this not the plan in which he went through, and Rodney and he got together?
Yes, sir.
To get corrected, to eliminate the city's responsibility? Then are you prepared to say, speak on his behalf?
Well, I can.
Excellent.
On the front cover sheet, it just says that we're supposed to have a public hearing at our next meeting, or was that, I assume that's first meeting in January?
I thought that was, I'm.
On the erosion control, and I think we are, we, I don't think the night was set up for a public hearing.
That's what I'm saying, it's for the next meeting.
Yes.
But this is just a presentation to provide it to you so that you will have it, can peruse it until we're ready to bring it forward next time. But Mr. Webb is not here to provide you a presentation, it was more just opportunity to give it to you and let you have it in your hands for the next meeting.
And I think we've already said everything.
He'll be here for the next meeting, in the public hearing.
Yes, he will be. I had some.
We said everything already in motion for the public hearing on January the first? Is that not right, something?
I don't know. I don't know if we have or not, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Brooke, did you find out for us before we get out of here tonight, if we've said everything in motion for a public hearing set up for January the first? If we don't, we need to go back, we need to do that.
First meeting in January.
First of January, yeah, first meeting in January. The next item is the consideration of the acceptance by the city of Starville, of the streets, and the Thad Cockham Research Park. And I think Bill has already put his approval of acceptance on these, and these are greatly improved conditions out there, that were done to the specifications that he required. That's been done. I think David, he has given his approval in regard to that, is that not correct? I believe that's right. Any of you have any questions about that? We agreed beforehand that we would accept these streets and maintain them if they were done to Bill Webb's specifications at the time.
City specs.
City specs, yes.
And we are assured that that has occurred.
That's correct.
Then I would move that the city accept these streets and the Thad Cockham Research Park for perpetual care and maintenance.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Brings us down to the next item, which will probably.
Just a second. Wait, go ahead. Let me see. That's, you read. This is just a conveyance.
Is that the proper conveyance?
Yes, they'll get the conveyance to us.
Our next item is consideration approval of cap law for the purpose of extending waterlines, mains, into the annexed areas of the city. We have added to this the report from the Infrastructure Committee in regard to this. This will then be turned over to Mr. McLaren.
Mr. Mayor and Board, you will recall the work session of last evening relative to the Infrastructure Committee's report on water sewer rates, projects needed to be done, financing those projects and so forth. Mr. Devlin, the rooster has crowed, so why don't you come forward? And let's us talk about the whole matter we considered last night at the work session, looking first at the summary of the list of projects that need to be done by years over the next five years, and their estimated cost, the financial position of the Water Sewer Department in terms of what additional revenue would be needed, and then the various proposals for a rate increase to fund the needed additional revenue for the projects.
Did you want me to cover these projects in summary fashion? Okay. We divided these up by year over the next five years, projected projects for distribution system improvements, and then also some projects we see coming that we need to do for repair and maintenance of our existing facilities. But starting with the existing distribution projects that we need to complete in the next calendar year, which is 2007, which ends December 31st. Several projects, expensive projects that we need to do to get commercial fire protection, particularly to the areas we annexed and zoned commercially along the new 25, 12, and 82 bypasses. First project is currently underway. It's to get fire protection up to the developments that are starting to occur at the Reed Road and Highway 25 intersection. Its estimated cost is $640,000. The next project is one that we need to, the last step in completing our 2003 water system capacity upgrades in Starkville, and that's connecting the new booster station on Bluefield Road to the high system there at Walmart. Estimated cost there is about $280,000. We need to complete the sewer main to get sewer service to the new Laurel Valley Court development that's going up in South Starkville. Its estimated cost is $47,000. We're getting ready to run fire protection down to the Deerfield area on Old 25, and its estimated cost is $62,000. And then the last project we see for this year is getting fire protection out to the annexed, commercially zoned areas at the Highway 12 Extended and 82 intersection, which Hilton Garden Inn is already indicated, they're going to put a hotel in out there. And its cost is $855,000. So total distribution projects for this year.
This year is 2007.
2007. The calendar year 2007 is about $1.88 million. Repair and maintenance projects, which we're commencing or already have underway. At the wastewater plant, we're rebuilding the trim cane pumping station. We're two pumps short at the influent pump station down at the wastewater treatment plant, and then we've got some AC motor starters and controls down there that need to be replaced. So those projects are estimated to cost around $316,000. The Curry Street filter plant rehab and rebuild is underway. It's coming along nicely, and we started issuing pay estimates for that in this fiscal year, and it's estimated to cost $550,000. And then just some general, normal kind of repair and maintenance type things that we stick in each year. New construction, we're putting in $238,000 for, you know, vulcanized linings, water and sewer laterals from the mains that we're installing, $238,000. And then in the.
These being repairs, upgrades, rebuilds, and trouble spots in the existing system throughout the city.
Yes, that's correct. And water operation maintenance, some equipment replacements, and then our standard amount of material that we use for repair and replacements is $213,000. So that pretty well summarizes this year. Next year, we plan to run fire protection.
Next year is 2008.
Eight, 2008, right. That's right. We're not in 2007, we're pretty close. Okay, 2008 calendar year, we're planning to run fire protection down Reed Road West, which is west of Highway 25, and down to the end of Babylon Road, which is an 1998 annexed area, it's going to be $120,000. And then we need to get commercial fire protection up to the 82-389 intersection, which is going to be a hotspot for development, because there's access on and off the Highway 82 at that spot, and it's $619,000. Then, of course, you know, the O and M type projects, another $250,000 budgeted for what Mr. McLaren touched on earlier, just replacements of worn out existing pipes and mains, and so on and so forth. Fiscal, calendar year 2009, we put in, bring the residential hydraulic fire protection to the Rock Hill area, and hydrants and mains, and that's estimated to be in the neighborhood of $415,000. And of course, the O and M type projects we mentioned, around $4 million. 2010, you know, we don't really have anything out of the ordinary identified, but around 2011, we're going to need to, we're projecting that our sludge lagoon down at the wastewater treatment plant is going to be at for over capacity.
2011?
Yes, sir, 2011. And we're going to need to deal with that, either increase capacity or somehow be able to greenfield the material that's down there. But we estimate the cost of that is going to be around $600,000. So that's the summary of the identified projects over the last five years. As far as financing these projects, we're looking to finance not only these projects, but our regular operating expenses in the division in a couple of ways. One is enacted rate increase as soon as possible, that'll generate an additional $750,000 of annual revenue into the fund. Then the other piece is, and we'll be discussing that later tonight, is to apply for a Mississippi Development Authority Capital Improvement Loan. We're eligible, if we can go ahead and pass a resolution tonight to apply for a million dollars of 2006 funds, and then after the first of the year, we can, we anticipate we're eligible for another $500,000. So that'd be a $1.5 million cap loan, which carries an interest rate of 2%, which we would amortize over 20 years. The, and that pretty much keeps our ending cash balances over the five-year planning horizon in the positive, in the positive position. Some rate increase scenarios that were discussed last night, and also with the Infrastructure Pretty much the consensus of the committee that we need to basically assess, to put it in the best words possible, is to make sure that every single resident where we have the obligation to provide water and sewer services, whether used or not, we need to go ahead and make sure we're spreading the cost of having that capacity available and that infrastructure available, share it among all our customers. And some scenarios, there were several scenarios discussed, and the one that we seem to come to a consensus with two of the board members who are on the Infrastructure Committee, and you saw it in the paper this morning, if you read the Starkville Daily News, but is a increase of the billing charge, which is $4 now, to $7.50. And then increase the water and sewer rates per thousand gallons, water, which is $1.93 per thousand gallons now, increasing it to $2.15, and then the same with the sewer. It's $1.93 now, and also increasing it to $2.15. So with that change in rate structure, that'll generate the three quarters of a million dollars in annual revenues that we need to finance these projects, and our loan repayments, and our obligations to run the department as well.
And are you not proposing a $1 million loan for initial, and then maybe another one, is it next year, year related?
Yeah, we're eligible, if we can get our application in soon and start the public notices, that we can apply for the million dollars that we're eligible for in 2006, which.
Do we not have a deadline on that for this next year?
Yes, we do. Yeah, we need to go ahead and. Miss Phyllis, I mean, help, Phyllis? Come on up.
Hello, Phyllis.
Hi.
Just stay right there. Finish this other, we'll get back to this loan in just a minute, all right?
Okay. Mr. McLaren, did you want me to pair out, hand out the rate comparisons with the survey?
Yes, why don't you? I asked Doug also to check with cities around, which he has an ongoing monitoring list of cities, to take a look at rates and so forth in comparable cities.
You don't got to check, all right?
When we started working on these rate increases late last summer, I had about 13 or so cities that I had surveyed and got their water rates. But this morning, I was able to contact, let's see, six, yeah, six of them, and get confirmed what their rates are as of today. Many of them have enacted rate increases since this past summer. But the chart in front of you has, what, a 7,000 gallon combined monthly water and sewer bill would be in these different cities. And the Starkville bill that you see of $37.60 per month is with the rate increase that we've just discussed enacted. So as you can see, we're of the, what is it, one, two, three, seven cities, including us, we're still the, of these, of this sample, we're the third, you know, third lowest from the bottom. So there are four other of these cities who are, who have rates that are higher than ours. So this seems to be a reasonable, you know, reasonable amount of rate increase, and puts us, you know, it's not unreasonable, then put us excessively above the sample I took today.
Can the board members have questions, Mr. Devlin?
The Infrastructure Committee, composed of Alderman Cox, Alderman Perkins, and I, have had several meetings dealing with this whole issue here. The bottom line openly becomes, if you look over in a planning projection over the next five years, there are a significant number of major improvements that need to be made to our system, new construction, as well as continuing replacement. be made to our system, new construction, as well as continuing replacement, maintenance and so forth of existing system. Uh, the cost of these projects, uh, must be funded in some fashion. The current status of the Water Sewer Fund is, uh, insufficient to fund these projects and so we have tossed around various funding mechanisms, including this, uh, cap loan that has been mentioned, uh, which is at a two percent interest rate and the bottom line ultimately becomes through some, uh, uh, configuration, we need to increase water sewer revenues by seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year to be able to pay for all of these improvements, uh, over the next five-year planning period. Uh, the, the Water Sewer Fund is unable to absorb this with existing revenue. The projects have to be done. It's now a matter of finding, funding to, uh, uh, sufficiently al- allow the projects to be accomplished. Uh, the Infrastructure Committee, uh, and Roy, is it fair to say, a, a vote of two to one?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, the Infrastructure Committee by a vote of two to one, Alderman Cox and I being in the, uh, majority of two, Alderman Perkins, uh, the one, uh, recommend for your consideration the proposed rate increase and then also we'll get to the cap loan a little bit later, but that's included, the payback of the cap loan is included in the funding of this rate increase that we're talking about. If the rate increase is approved, we offer for your consideration the proposed rate increase.
And that, that's proposal that was presented last night with, uh, seven fifty plus then the two thirteen or two fifteen?
Two fifteen, yeah. Water going to two fifteen, sewer going to two fifteen and, uh, irrigation meters remaining, you know, the, the billing charge remaining at four dollars like it is now.
This is a, uh, increase from four dollars to seven dollars and fifty cents for what you might more properly be called the base monthly rate. Uh, over the years, this has been called minimum bill, but that's a little bit misleading in terms of, of what it implies. And then a water charge increase per thousand gallons from a dollar and ninety-three cents per thousand to two dollars and fifteen cents per thousand, uh, simply, of course, the more you use, the more we will pay for water consumed. Uh, this, of course, is to keep the parity between the water rates and sewer rates, uh, which the sewer rates would correspondingly increase to the two dollars and fifteen cents per thousand gallons of water used. Uh, the rates here apply both to residential properties as well as commercial properties. Uh, all would pay the same rate based upon a thousand gallons of water used. Questions on any of, of that or further explanation?
You mentioned that the sprinkling system, things that might have changed those-
Uh, yeah, they, everybody keeps talking about this. Those households that have already established their basic, uh, water meter and have chosen for watering yards or whatever, to establish a second meter, it's usually called a sprinkling meter, a wa- yard watering meter, uh, the charges for that second meter after the person pays for the first meter that everybody else does will remain the same. The effective date of the rate increase would be January one.
Do we have a motion and second?
We do not yet-
We do not.
Unless there is any discussion.
We're gonna discuss before the motion or after the motion?
I'm sorry, what did he say?
We're gonna discuss before the motion is made or after the-
We can discuss either way or both. Since it has been presented for, uh, this general presentation to, uh, the public that was, uh, uh, not present at the work session last night.
Do we have a motion?
Uh, I would move then that the, uh, rate structure for the Water and Sewer Department, uh, be changed effective January one to the following, the base rate of seven dollars and fifty cents per month per household meter and the rate of two dollars and fifteen cents per thousand gallons of water used, both residential and commercial. And that this rate structure be instituted to provide the necessary seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year needed to fund the list of projects that have been planned out, uh, that are needed to be implemented over the next five years.
Do we have a second to that motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there discussion of this motion?
First of all, let me commend Doug, the committee on their planning, trying to lay out projects, you know, this type of stuff that that committee ought to be doing and I hope they look towards streets and drainage and the other myriad issues in the very near future. Uh, I agree that we need to raise the rates and raise revenue to pay for these projects. I think everybody, most everybody would agree with that. The thing that I'd like to talk about is that last night in the work session, Doug presented ten different scenarios to raise the same amount of revenues based on, um, the base payment and then rates. And the thing that struck me is we kept talking about the seven thousand gallon monthly water and sewer bill, which was discussed as your average home for, you know, four-person home, adult, couple of kids, whatnot. But the thing that struck me as interesting was that in the various scenarios that were presented, as the base rate went up and the, the correspondingly, the, the rate per thousand gallons went down, the percent increase for that seven thousand gallon home also increased, okay? And so, in my mind, I, I think that we, if we can generate the same amount of revenue and yet have that bill percentage increase minimized as much as possible, that would be the option that we should take and I may be in the minority in that viewpoint and, and let me stress, I do think we need to raise revenue to do these projects. I just, question's not, is it, the question becomes, how do you do that? And in my opinion, I think we ought to look at one of those scenarios, as you, in your presentation towards the front end and for y'all that didn't see it, it's lower base payment, higher per thousand gallon usage. And, and that's just to, like I said, because of the curious fact that that average typical home rate percentage increase went up as we went down, the, the matrix as you presented. So, it's just my two cents on discussion.
I have a move with a question. We have a motion, we've had some discussion. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Alright, that's two, I believe, that are opposed, is that right? Three. Three opposed and four ayes. That part of it passes, uh, we'll continue our discussion here.
Mr. McLaurin, did you, did you want to, uh, address the deposits?
Oh, yes, let's, let's take this one step further here while we're, we're thrashing all of this. Oh, let me find my note. Presently, uh, help me with this, I've got to find my, my notes here, but presently there is a thirty-five dollar per month, uh, deposit required for-
Is that right?
All homes, is there not?
Yes.
Right, for all, all residential property. Uh, what is the deposit for commercial?
I don't, it varies, depends on, but, uh, the, uh-
Some sort of average usage type of thing?
Yes, sir, and what type, business, all it is.
Okay. Oh, it has been recommended by both the, the Water Sewer Department and the Electric Department that the deposit on rental properties needs to be increased since it appears that it is the category of rental property where we suffer, we the city, we the citizens, suffer most of the losses for unpaid bills, for whatever reason and a variety of different reasons. And so to minimize the loss when bills are unpaid and uncollectible and have to be written off, it has been recommended that the deposit on rental property be increased from thirty-five to fifty-five-
Fifty-five, yes, sir.
To fifty-five dollars, uh, to minimize the loss that occurs when the bills are not Any questions or comments?
Um, it, maybe you can, how, how much were the write-offs this past year?
Or the losses?
Yeah, the losses. If you remember, it was a pretty significant figure and we just have to, have to eat that.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Vice Mayor?
Thank you for recognition, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Mr. Chairman, um, it appears that this is not an agenda item and I don't think that this, then through, um, the Infrastructure Committee has been reported out. Is there any reason that this being brought up tonight, uh, absent it being on the agenda?
Well, we added this and this particular age is a report from the Infrastructure Committee pertaining to this, this issue as such and that was added back when we put, formulated the agenda at the beginning.
Mr. Mayor, uh, Mr. Chairman, Ms. McLaurin?
Uh, yes.
My question still remains the same. Do you have a response?
Oh, yes, I do not recall, I recall it being mentioned in an Infrastructure Committee meeting, but we have not reported anything out, to my recollection, on this.
Now, uh, this is not an agenda item, uh, uh, I'm just trying to see clarity why we're bringing it up, uh, with the agenda being just a report from Infrastructure without the Infrastructure Committee members being aware of what's gonna be reported from the chair.
Oh, nothing other than the thought that we might deal with all the rate thing, this is a fairly simple, straightforward matter, but, uh, uh, in deference to the committee, if they would like to consider this as a committee and we can come back, then we will forestall, uh, the discussion of the rating bridge on deposits for rental units.
That's just my opinion, I don't know what the gentleman on fire wants, um, makes sense for us to carefully consider it.
Okay. Uh, and, and, and the gentleman will recall that it's been brought to the board and was presented and was tabled for future discussion, but no problem, fine. Okay? Alright, uh, Ms. Benson, Doug, cap loans.
You'd like an overview of the cap loan program?
Uh, a brief overview, yes.
Okay. Uh, the Mississippi Legislature has appropriated money through a bond program for local units of government, that being municipalities and counties to tap into the cap loan program. There are tax-exempt projects and taxed projects. Tax-exempt projects, which this one would be a tax-exempt project, is eligible for two percent loan up to twenty years. The maximum loan that you can get in any one year is a million dollars. The most outstanding debt that you can have is two point five million. City does have some outstanding debt through the Service Zone Project. I think it's somewhere around seven hundred thousand dollars. I'll have to confirm that, but you, it, are eligible to apply for enough to cover this infrastructure project, improvements project. Um, in order to do it, we're gonna have to fast-track this so that you can apply for a million dollars of oh-six money and then half a million in oh-seven. The first step is to pass the resolution of intent to apply for the cap loan. This is advertised in a local paper once a week for four consecutive weeks. After it's, the public has been notified, we conduct a public hearing, which we can do at the second board meeting in the month of January and at that time, if there's no objection to the project, we can proceed forward. In essence, what we have to do is pass this resolution, get an application to the state and then follow up with the final public hearing information. We'll make note that you are pledging your home, your sales tax. Counties pledge homestead, municipalities pledge their sales tax. So, if for some reason you should default, you won't get sales tax reimbursement for the month.
Or the extent of the payment would be deducted from your sales tax reimbursement, yeah.
But, uh, as I mentioned, you can go up to twenty years, there's no penalty for early payment. The only thing that this is going to cost you on the front end is that the state asks that you have an attorney review to determine that this is indeed a tax-exempt project and it will cost you, I think, two hundred and seventy-five dollars to do that.
The, uh, setting of rates was predicated upon being able to get the million-dollar initial cap loan at the two percent interest. So it's something that is needed to be done to keep rate increases as low as is possible.
Unfortunately, this type of project does not qualify for any of the grant programs that we're accustomed or traditionally work with, so this, it's essentially, um, a good venture. A lot of the local units of government in this area do tap into this program. It is available.
I will, Mr. Mayor, I would offer, uh, a motion adopting a resolution of the governing authority of the City of Starkville to apply for the cap loan in the principal amount not to exceed one million dollars for the purpose of, uh, helping complete the water sewer projects that were listed in our earlier discussion of the five-year project plan. Uh, you have copies of the resolution that appeared in, uh, that were pla- not appeared, placed in your box, uh, earlier this week and, uh, were handed out last night and sent by email in a variety of different, uh, uh, ways. And the resolution, uh, declares the city's intent to apply for the loan. It, uh, talks about security for the loan, which as Ms. Benson said, would be a pledge of the city's sales tax if it were not to be paid, but remember figured into the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar revenue increase for the Water Sewer Fund is the repayment of the cap loan. And this authorizes publication, uh, five times, four, five, four times in the newspaper and, uh, the finalization of this at the, uh, second meeting in January. And I would offer that resolution.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion with a second. We've heard the preliminary indications of this. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
The passage of time. We have shared your joy at the birth of your children and proudly we have watched them grow. We've taken care of your health care needs during the good times and the not-so-good. Your parents and grandparents have depended upon us. Together we have shared the struggles and the wonders of life. At Octavahaw County Hospital, we are celebrating thirty years of being your lifelong choice in health care.
Now to the building departments, the departmental businesses. Uh, first item is the Building Codes Planning Department. The first item that is a recommendation on apartment building planning zoning for the dental law- for the dental office located in Pearson Place Commercial Subdivision is recommended by the planning zoning.
Anyone here to talk about that? Oh. Uh, Ms. Mayor, I, I think it would be good if someone would be here every meeting to talk about these particular projects, uh, even if it ends up being, uh, the chairman or representative from the planning zoning commission. If we have no staff person to, to do this, uh, of course, I'm sure the attorney, uh, was present at that meeting and would be able to, to comment on any of these things, uh...
That's one of the shortest meetings y'all had, wasn't it?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Mr. Ma- Ms. Mayor, just add one comment. Ms. McLauren, just to follow what you're saying. Maybe, uh, after we come out and get to session, we can give some further directions, how we're gonna proceed. Will, will these matters be presented to the mayor and board?
Oh, okay.
Mr. Favor, when, when y'all, when Planning and Zoning Commission went over this, did they, did the site plan meet all of the city's ordinances and, 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 uh, as presented to them?
That's what we reported to the commission?
Yes. Bill Webb had a, uh, a little note on his initial report with a question about stormwater runoff. I assume those were addressed or answered during that planning zoning commission meeting?
They were.
Alright.
You know, and just as a note, Mr. Favor, and I'm not addressing this to you, but just, uh, making comment, you know, there are two unsigned lines from this, uh, review committee. Uh, Ms. Devlin, Public Services is not signed on this, so, uh, you know, it begs the question, is there any problem here or, or something? This is a, a dental office?
No, I thought I had signed all those, uh, but there's no problem.
And then there is no, uh, Americans with Disability Committee signature on this. Do we assume that all these requirements of those two, uh, uh, units have been met?
Yeah, water and service fine.
He doesn't know about the ADA.
Uh, can anyone tell us if the ADA group was contacted on this, if they're gonna review these things, assuming the liability for reviewing?
Well, they're not assuming the liability for reviewing. We're, we're...
Uh, if they are reviewing, they're assuming the liability for reviewing?
No, they're looking at them to give us input. We're, the building department is supposed to be actually being the ones that signed off on it. It's having been discussed and been looked at. It's more of a checklist as much as anything. Um, and I was not at the planning and zoning commission meeting, but, uh, my presumption was that P and Z passed off on it and that those items were satisfied, Mr. Favor.
What they even talked about?
I don't remember specifically the ADA, but the items are always talked about that are not signed and that specific question is addressed to Sarah. And she tells them whether or not the reviewing department head is passed off on it. And if it's not, it's tabled for another time. But as far as the ADA compliance, my understanding is that they were not gonna be signing these things.
I said they're gonna act as sort of an advisory group to the general department.
That's what my understanding was, that I can't answer your specific question as to whether they were contacted or reviewed 'cause that wasn't addressed at the commission meeting.
I thought we were gonna have a signature on these line from the building department to reflect that it does meet the federal requirements with the Americans with Disabilities Act. And if that's not on here, then, um, we could certainly make our approval conditional upon that, uh, that final approval. Because we don't know, assuming that was...
I don't remember specifically that being addressed regarding this particular project at that meeting.
Well, then, based on the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission, I'd move approval of the site plan review for the Dr. Jim Brown's dental office located at Pearson Place Commercial Subdivision on Walker Way, south of Hospital Road, um, with, uh, this would be a conditional approval, uh, waiting for a final signature if it hasn't been done, um, for compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion with a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Brings it down for the, uh, consideration of the site plan for Dr. Santy and the Hilton Garden Inn. Did, uh, Ed leave? I know he was gonna be representing.
Yeah, Ed had to leave. Uh, my name is David Cork. Mr. Mayor, board, y'all, most of y'all know me. And I guess I'm stuck with the job of answering any of your questions that I can. At the planning and zoning, uh, all ahead the department, they was left with a full set of plans for the, from the ground up. It's total metal construction, no wood in it. Only wood is the headboards. They screwed the metal studs. It's almost fireproof. The fire chief, he was tickled to death when he saw those plans. Wouldn't have to have near much water pressure. If there's anything else I can answer, that y'all like to know, I'll try it.
I believe all the specification everything by all the department heads was pretty well satisfied with their site review plan. And that they're asking for a height, uh, restriction to exceed eighty-five feet.
This did not come to the Planning and Zoning Commission as a request for a variance. This came just as a site plan review. It wasn't discussed about a variance. That was not requested. So I don't wanna mislead the board in believing that the Planning and Zoning Commission, um, dealt with that particular issue.
But, but they did, they did know it was gonna be five stories. Because they had pictures of plans, uh, you know, had all the pictures there before we went, before the planning and zoning of what the one in West Monroe that's completing right as we speak and the one in Lafayette that's identical to it. And they looked, they looked at all of that.
It was an oversight, uh, Mr. Webb should have included in your packet, um, on report from, from, uh, his perspective.
He did?
Yeah, I'm saying he did. It was simply an oversight, but it wasn't in front of the planning side.
But you're saying Planning and Zoning had not, has not approved, I believe?
They, they did not look at. It's not unusual, I mean, it's not requested.
Not the variance. It wasn't brought before the Planning and Zoning Commission on the variance.
This falls in the latter district chief, is that correct?
Yes, it is.
And the latter district will have no height limitations, is that correct?
Uh, up to a hundred and five feet.
Up to a hundred and five feet. And then where are we with, with regard to, say, having P and Z approving the latter district?
We're actually, uh, Attorney Favor and I are actually waiting on some written documents from the rating bureau. Should get them shortly after the first of the year. Everybody's in and out because of the holiday.
We requested these a month ago, at least.
And so we may still be waiting another month or two months from now until they get around to doing it, is that correct?
Could.
I see. Was very clearly stated in here that they're asking for a var- a variance of the eighty-five foot height.
Mr. Favor, to, to give site plan review approval tonight, do we need to do a separate consideration of the variance here at the board table? Or is, would the approval of the site plan cover that variance? They need to be done separately?
And the reason why I bring that to the board's attention was that Mr. Davis, some time ago, said that all of these things need to go in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission. That's been the policy that this board adopted. And this is, that's the policy this board's following. I'm not taking issue with Mr. Cork's statement that they were aware that this was five stories. That's not the point I'm trying to bring to the board. I'm just trying to bring it to y'all's attention that the policy that you adopted pursuant to Mr. Davis's motion wasn't followed in regard to the variance. But that's up to you to decide what you wanna do.
But it was clear at the planning and zoning meeting that this building was of this size?
That, that, that question was specifically asked by one of the board members. I think it was Ms. Herring that asked the question.
Right.
That, wha- how many stories is this building? And they were told it was five stories. There was no, uh, there's no question that that was discussed and the question specifically asked, as I say, I think Ms. Herring asked the question. But...
But they didn't specifically grant a variance?
Correct.
No, they wasn't wanting to ask for, uh, I didn't...
Because that was not presented to them, that request.
Would it be feasible to grant approval based upon, uh, granting of the variance by the planning and zoning so that at least the gentleman would not have to come back?
Well, what you've done in the past, Alderman, is you have done, you have approved conditional based on going back. You have conditioned it upon their approval. You've done that before. Which would be conformed with Alderman Davis's motion of a year or so ago and the procedures and policies that we followed since then. But that's up to you as to what you wanna do.
And while you're mulling that over, as has always been the case when Mr. Cork is before us, uh, he and I are related, a kinship which sometimes he claims, sometimes he does not claim, uh, and vice versa. Uh, so I will, uh, need to abstain, uh, on this, this vote regardless, as I have whenever he has been before several times.
Well, I'm gonna, it would seem to make sense to take these, it would seem to my mind to take the variance first before we would consider the site plan review and, and because this issue was considered in front of, um, the height issue was considered in front of, uh, planning and zoning and, and given that, a- as I've been told, the agenda is now closed for planning and zoning, this issue wouldn't even come up until February. Um, and this is a, uh, a, a project that we're already moving earth on, um, a multimillion dollar project, one of these that...
Seventeen million.
Um, that we're looking at, uh, hopefully having in place by, uh, the first football game here, two thousand and seven, if not before.
We're gonna make it now. That's what we were wanting.
But, uh, I'd move approval of, uh, of the variance, um, uh, for the proposed Hilton Garden Inn, um, which is a five-story structure. Uh, that would be eighty feet above ground and this would exceed our existing ordinances, which are under review, um, of forty-five feet. Is that with the caveat that the attorney or someone acting for the building department present the variance back to Planning and Zoning for their conditional approval, as we have done in the past?
And presented at the January meeting, the agenda can be open.
Right. So we can open that agenda?
It can.
Okay. That'd be, that would be perfectly appropriate. So that basically it's gonna be a done deal, but to keep them in the loop and follow our procedures from previous. So perfectly appropriate. Do you get all that, Dan?
She might have, but I didn't.
Basically, what they'll do is approve this under conditional.
Right, right.
Things and that it goes back to P and Z to take up that one little item there.
Right, right.
But, uh, you can basically continue to work in what you're doing.
Right, I understand.
Am I right, uh, Mr. Davis, what you're saying?
Right, and, and, and my intent was that, um, Attorney Favor or someone acting for the building department could actually make the presentation back to explain the situation so that someone representing the property would not necessarily have to...
Bill, Bill Webb and, and, uh, city manager, what's, uh, what's his name?
You talking about George Romo?
Yeah, they was here at the planning and zoning that night and, and, you know, Bill answered any questions that they had.
And, and that's fine, just procedurally, just so y'all don't have to come back up here in January and everything. That one of them can make the presentation, or at least that's my intent.
I'll second Alderman Constance's motion.
We don't have a second?
Corey's second.
Corey just seconded it.
Richard did. All right. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
One and a second.
One and a second, which is, by the way, uh, in favor of the motion.
The, uh, second item then would be to, uh, I'd move approval of the site plan review as recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission for Dr. S.L. Sethi for the Hilton Garden Inn located on Highway twelve extended, um, with only one condition that, um, uh, we have a sign-off that, uh, this site plan review meets all requirements, um, uh, as we understand it for the Americans with Disabilities Act.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
One and a second.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, does the planning and zoning meeting in January now? Somebody said February?
No, no.
It'll be on January.
Well, the mayor has power to open the meeting up for any additional to the meeting, and we just did it, alright?
That's, when do I need to be back? What I'm getting at?
Need to check with Sarah in the building department to see when that meeting is, and I would recommend that you do that.
I'm leaving town early in the morning.
We, we were gonna have Bill Webb make that presentation.
Well, I mean...
Uh, Mr. Cork may want to be there.
If, if he wants to be there, that's fine, but I would...
I'd check.
Yeah. Well, Bill, Bill familiar with the whole deal.
Well, he obviously not, uh, he, that was an oversight on his part.
Well, I wanna thank you and wish y'all a Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, electric department is all consent. You guys sit down.
City clerk.
City, oh, excuse me, that's right. City clerk?
Good evening.
Good evening. Ms. Marquita had her hat on, I noticed, in the office today, so she must have gone somewhere with that hat dressed up.
Well, actually, something come up, family matter, that she had to leave early.
Okay, we have the approval of the claims docket as of December the fourteenth, two thousand and six.
Yes, the city clerk's office requests approval for the, the claims docket that you have before you.
Seeing my colleagues have any changes, I move that we approve the, uh, the claims docket of December fourteenth, two thousand and six.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Thank you. The electric department is all consent, one, two, and three. That would then brings down personnel. The first item on personnel is consent. That brings us to item two of personnel transfer. If you'll come up and talk about these last two items on the personnel.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Um, I move that we approve the, um, transfer and promotion of Jenny Hughes from City Hall Receptionist to the needle credit position of administrative assistant to the Public Service Department of Grade Eight Step Four, annual salary of twenty-four thousand eight oh-three twenty-seven, effective at the beginning of the next pay period, which is Friday, December twenty-two, two double oh-six. And as a matter of equity, that the, uh, administrative assistant for the fire department, uh, be likewise upgraded to a Grade Eight Step Four, which will be effective Friday, December twenty-two, two double oh-six. And that the administrative assistant for the fire department will receive an annual salary um, of twenty-four thousand eight oh-three twenty-seven, effective Friday, December twenty-two, two double oh-six, which is the beginning of the next pay period. Form of motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
I'm gonna assume that includes the appropriate probationary period.
I'm sorry, and I would like to thank you, gentlemen. Uh, thank you, gentlemen. Uh, no, we're gonna do a, I'm gonna recommend, uh, a one-year probationary period. The reason I'm saying it here, because normally, uh, uh, to my colleagues, normally a promoted employee has already been on probation for a year.
Right.
But this new hire has been, uh, employed for less than four months, which will give her ba- basically a year and four months. If I can add that to the, and I had that in my notes, I was, uh, dictating it without looking, but, um, one-year probationary period, that is in agreement to my colleagues.
Is there any problem with him adding that, gentlemen, ladies?
Your second will accept that.
Thank you.
Accept that. That passes. Uh, item, uh, requested appetized filled position receptions, that this, uh, position will be, uh, leave a vacant. Do we have a motion?
So move second.
We have a motion and a second, that we fill and appetize the filled reception position. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
Nay.
Y'all sound in unison there. Y'all sound in unison down there. Who would say it?
Uh, nay, Perkins.
Cox and Perkins.
Cox and Perkins, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, the next two items of public services are consent. It brings us down to a executive session. I have a motion that we, we, uh, go to close session in order to discuss. You want to discuss this thing, sir?
Motion's closed.
You can't, then you'll give him a chance to break down.
That's right.
Oh, thanks.
Mayor, we need a motion to be closed.
Thank you.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Do I hear a vote? All those in favor going to a closed session, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
The passage of time. We have shared your joy at the birth of your children, and proudly we have watched them grow. We've taken care of your health care needs during the good times and the not-so-good. Your parents and grandparents have depended upon us. Together, we have shared the struggles and the wonders of life. At Oktibah County Hospital, we are celebrating thirty years of being your lifelong choice in health care.